Okay, Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order for October 28th, 2021. We did just come out of closed session. I have no reportable action. With that, Councilman Schaefer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please read after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a throne.
Thank you. Amy, would we please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATU verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, November 1st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you. And with that, is there any changes councilmembers would like to make to the agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is Presentation Number Four, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Recognizing Police Department Records and Support Staff, and I will turn it over to Chief Turcot for the introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're joined by Tiffany Campbell. She manages our records unit and many of our support services folks, and she'll introduce this item.
Thank you very much, Chief. Mayor Miller and Tiffany Campbell, good evening. Yes, I am Tiffany Campbell. I manage the records unit for the department as chief. And I'm so proud of that assignment. Tonight, I want to thank you for taking time to recognize records and police support personnel. They are a very dedicated and detail-oriented team who are top-notch professionals. They're trusted with reviewing and releasing confidential documents and our citizens' reports, and they just do an outstanding job. They're very dedicated, and most importantly, they provide exceptional support to our sworn personnel, and that is a critical function within our police department. And so I just want to thank you for taking the time tonight to recognize this day and really extend how proud I am to work with this team. They're a fabulous group. So tonight, in front of you and council, to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the records and support personnel is our Senior Records Assistant, Devin Burns. Thank you, and Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Supervisor Campbell and Chief. First, I'd like to, before I present this to Devin, I'd like to read it. This is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming November 9th, 2021, as Records and Support Personnel Day. I'm going to skip the whereas's. Law enforcement agencies throughout the state rely on dedicated, unsung heroes, and this is the men and women who support and work within the police records unit. November 9th has been proclaimed Law Enforcement, Records, and Support Personal Day by the California Law Enforcement Association of Records Supervisors, and when an officer responds to a call and authors a report, you know all this, right? The Citrus Heights Police Department records and support personnel are a crucial part of the overall process. Highly trained and technically skilled records and support personnel are responsible for ensuring accurate, detailed, and confidential information is entered into the multiple law enforcement databases and ensures complex coding is accurate for statistical, uniform crime reporting and crime analysis. When a person is arrested or emergency warrants are in immediate need, records and support personnel perform a critical function and prepare the necessary reports, forms, and cases for submission to the district attorney for the prosecution of suspects. Records and support personnel are responsible for meeting several filing deadlines, ensuring all reports, citation, and court orders are correctly entered and maintained and provided to the courts. Exceptional customer service knowledge regarding ever-changing laws and mandates and ensuring officers, victims, and juvenile information is protected is just a small portion of what our dedicated and specialized records and support personnel handle daily. The Citrus Heights Police Department records and support personnel are an essential part of the overall police operation, and we sincerely thank them all for their valuable contributions to the law enforcement process and for the unparalleled service they provide to the members of the department, the city, and the Citrus Heights community. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim November 9th as Records and Support Personal Day and hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to honor records and support personnel and publicly reaffirm our city's commitment to this valuable and talented team during this day and throughout the year. And Devin, I'd like to present this to you. From the City Council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's now over to the paperwork section. Okay, next, I'd like to ask Suzanne Winters. Do we have anybody from American Legion? Hi Suzanne, I have a proclamation for you. This proclaims November as National Veterans and Military Families Month. The United States is a beacon of hope, freedom, and opportunity to people around the world, and the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and coast guardsmen who fight to defend our liberty embody courage, patriotism, and loyalty. America's military men and women and their families are vital to the security and prosperity of our nation. We have the responsibility to protect and serve those who have made countless sacrifices for our country. Throughout our history, our military men and women have boldly answered the call of duty to defend our nation's independence and precious liberties, risking life and limb for their fellow Americans. Military families exemplify the courage and resolve that define our national character. They rise to the challenge of multiple deployments and frequent moves. Spouses who care and provide for children in their partner's absence and kids who make new friends and leave known comforts behind. Since we are a nation that leaves no American behind, and that includes our veterans and their family members, we recognize that our obligation to our military men and women does not end after their time in uniform. Each warrior who fights for our nation along with their families has earned our internal gratitude. We ask that all Americans thank and support them. Together, we remain committed to fostering a national community of support for these brave heroes and families. So now, here be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim November 2021 as National Veterans and Military Families Month and do by hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to join in and recognize and express their appreciation for the service, sacrifices, and contributions of veterans and military families for what they have done and for what they do every day to support our great nation. And so Suzanne, I'd like to present this to you, and you are representing the American Legion Auxiliary 383.
That's correct.
District President.
Yes.
Oh, I know you.
I know. And I'm here because I helped put the proclamation together.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mayor Miller, first, I'd like to thank you very, very much and the City Council of Citrus Heights.
You get the microphone.
Thank you, thank you so much for honoring us with this proclamation. I don't know how many of you realize that 22 of our service members daily take their lives to suicide. So this proclamation acknowledges their sacrifice, it acknowledges and honors their service, and this proclamation was actually written in 2013 by Obama and then followed up again in 2019 by Trump declaring a proclamation to honor our veterans in November. So many of us don't know that November has been set aside for our veterans. So I thank you so much for helping us get it out there to our citizens to recognize and honor our military family. Thank you, thank you so much.
Our pleasure, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, would you like to go first?
Sure, thank you very much. Rain, 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 it came, and I just want to take a moment to publicly give a shout out to the city and the response to what we saw. There was flooding, but there was historical rain. And I left to the, go to the Bay Area at 4:00 a.m. on Monday morning, and I didn't see one road flooded at that time. And so, in our city, in our city, I should say, saw some other roads. But I just want to thank, I saw a crew out during the day, Sunday, doing some stuff and, you know, trying to keep drains cleared, and so just a shout out to those guys that really made it happen. Yes, there was some flooding, but again, it was historical rain, and I think the city did a really good job. And I had the opportunity to drive by the Antelope Sunrise Old Auburn area today, and I just want to say that, I want to do a shout out to Chief Turcot, the police department, and the others that are doing what they're doing and keeping that area looking good. It has much improved, and I know the people and businesses over there appreciate that extremely, and so thank you for getting that done. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bruins?
Thank you. Just want to dovetail a little bit on what Brett said regarding flooding. We had minimal flooding, actually, compared to what we used to experience before we took over the responsibility of keeping our creeks clean and implementing major drainage projects. And that goes back many years, but over time, what it does is it keeps our, the water flowing in our creeks and not backing up. Remember the days when we could not drive past Sylvan because it was mostly underwater? So Regina and her crew did a great job, and thank them for that. Didn't, haven't had a whole lot going on. Sentation Board has been meeting basically once a month rather than twice a month for a while, as our big project is beginning to wind down. We did attend on Friday the District Attorney's Annual Awards Lunch, which was really special because last year we didn't have a chance to do it. And every year, you know, they packed the barroom at the Doubletree, and it was wonderful to sit with our police chief and other members of the city staff. And every year, they have a speaker or a panel or a subject matter that they focus on. And this year, it was on victims and how victims of crimes, murder specifically, who's, someone who's lost their life and their families have left, been left with this void, and there are lots of different circumstances, how the victims are getting lost in the shuffle as legislation has continued to soften the penalty for crimes and what they're doing about it. And I have to applaud these people because they, each one of the four or five families who lost a loved one, some law enforcement officers, some children in, in all different circumstances, they've taken the banner and they've run with it, and they're turning it into proactive, good work for the community as a whole. So that was really a treat to be there. I just also want to do a shout out, meant to do this a couple council meetings ago. I don't always read word for word the annual adopted budget, but I did this year, and it's a two-year budget, and I want to say, want to thank staff, first of all, for the incredible job they did putting this together. It's a very valuable instrument, and for the, just the general public, you can find it on our website. It's a wealth of information. It's just not a list of numbers and dollars and expenses and revenues, but the publication itself is a really good overall representation of where we've been, where we are, what our goals are, where we're going. So if you want to learn, just as a whole, what the philosophy in our city is and what the things are that we want to accomplish, this is a really good document to read. I really enjoyed it. And finally, I want to give a shout out to our police department and our Police Activities League who are, as I speak, probably, hopefully, winding down close to a four-hour reverse trunk-or-treat event that's been going on since 4:00 this afternoon. It's our second year doing it. They expanded it in to the dignity parking lot. Traffic is flowing well. Kids are getting lots of candy, lots of in-person experience with our police department and other community members who've dressed up in the kitchen area and are celebrating Halloween with these kids in a safe manner and making a lot of fun. So I just want to thank them. In particular, I want to thank Sergeant Janet Schaefer, who does, is the backbone of a lot of the creative events being put on by the police department. She does a phenomenal job, and I think she was the heartbeat of this event again this year, too.
Thank you, Jeanie. Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy week. By the way, I just want to, want to iterate, it's all, I think Sergeant is fantastic, but there's actually no relation at all, too. Even though we spell our names exactly the same, far as I can tell, there's no relation there.
Weren't you a sergeant once?
No, I wasn't a sergeant.
Oh, I thought you needed sergeant.
So I've been very busy with the library board. The, our library director, Rivka Sass, is retiring, so we did a library director search. It was a national search. We had 22 well-qualified candidates apply. We went through the process of interviewing and meeting some of these folks via Zoom. We reduced that, reduced that number to six, then we reduced it to three, and I believe we have a candidate that, that looks pretty good. It's in the process of negotiations at the moment, but it's a tremendous amount of responsibility of the library system. There are about 700 employees that work for the library, and there's 28 branches. So it's a pretty big job working for, being the director of the library. So I look forward to announcing that soon on who the new library director is going to be. So with that, I look forward to, to the process of our own search for a replacement for our city manager, Christopher Boyd. So that's, I think that's coming in the next several weeks, and I look forward to, to working through that. So with that, that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. Vice Mayor Middleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we started out the week with our SECOC board meeting where we went over just housing elements, transportation elements. At the beginning of the meeting, we had an informal session where I was able to give a presentation about what we've done with all the money that we have received from SECOC, from our transportation, roadways, even to Sunrise Mall and our retail rooftops, and everyone was really excited about that information and how we're really making sure that we leave an imprint on the region. Today, I say 4:00, well, actually around 2:00, I was out there in the PD parking lot, getting ready to pass out candy. We decorated the back of our trunk. I assume that my family is still out there passing out candy, the lines of children and their smiles on their faces to be able to participate in this safe Halloween activity was just so exciting and heartwarming, and I'm sad I had to leave it a little bit early. And that's it. Thank you.
Portia? For myself, really the only thing of note, I was with Jeanie at the DA's lunch. I think Brett was there, too. Yes, you were. I know you were. I did just think that.
So was I.
Well, Portia, you were there, too. It's been a long week, folks, but on Monday night, we had a regional transit meeting. The one thing of note, and you'll be hearing this in the news, I'm sure, is the City of Sacramento is, has requested and is proposing a homeless safe ground to use a portion of the unused Roseville Road Light Rail Station parking lot. It's a very complex deal and a lot of parties involved, including Caltrans and the Federal Transportation Administration. Not too happy. I got on that board to deal with transportation issues. Their plan does look viable as far as creating a safe zone around it. Since they are providing a place for the homeless to go, they can actually roust them out, and, and they plan, they promised to provide security, demnify RT from any kind of lawsuits or civil actions that could come across, because that was my biggest thing is, something, something could happen, just like there a couple months ago where the homeless camp caught fire and a bunch of RVs were on fire, and it was underneath an overpass, and structurally, it's not structurally sound, we've got to repair it, and so, a lot of concerns, but we did authorize the general manager to at least discuss their proposal with them. So we'll see how that goes. Other than that, while we honored our veterans for the whole month, I am aware that our local, not, oh, Foreign Legion, I'm sorry, conducts a Veterans Day ceremony at Sylvan Cemetery. It's very respectful, it's very nice. I've been there 16 years in a row. I really enjoy going. I won't be able to do this this year, but Portia has agreed to represent the city. And again, if you don't know what time that starts, it's at 11:00. 11:11 at 11:00, Sylvan Cemetery. And with that, we're on to the next item. Amy?
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. I do not have any speaker sheets that were turned in from the audience. Looking at Zoom, I do not have any raised hands, but I do have two public comment to read.
Go ahead, then, please.
The first public comment is from Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa. I know it is not an action item at this time, but I wanted to add my comments to yours. Firstly, I sure hope we do not change the name of our Citrus Heights Community Center at all. It took many years and a lot of effort by many people to become a city, and we have touted our city name wherever, whenever we could. I am proud of our name and like to see, speak the words wherever, whenever we can. I participated in the stakeholder group, who met, discussed, and even toured surrounding communities and set the criteria for what the community wanted. The building is truly a reflection of our past and our future. Secondly, if you feel compelled to name the building something other than the building belonging to Citrus Heights, you should bring the issue to a vote of the people who built it. You have the flash vote system is placed and generally reach a good number of people who generate a good number of responses and comments. You could hold a nomination period for suggestions and then vote on the top suggestions. Thirdly, if you feel compelled to recognize someone who has passed from whom you feel has contributed to our city, such as Mary Purvis, Kathy Cook, Jean Duncan, or someone who was instrumental in getting that building constructed, Congressman Dan Lundgren, who got us the land, Henry Tingle, who scrimped and saved to pay cash for the building, or the Rotary Club, who wanted seating for 900 people for their crab feed, or anyone else you fancy. Why not name one of the areas in the building, such as the three conference rooms or the three ballrooms? I vote to keep the building as Citrus Heights Community Center, belonging to the community of Citrus Heights. The next public comment, please consider the issue for the item on, the item 13, ban on mandates, that it is more than a simple item on the agenda. This is about the deepest principle of life, and it has to do with freedom or tyranny. Do what's right and good. Don't be afraid of anything or anyone. Let the chips fall where they may. You will never regret doing what is right. Your children and many of us will remember you for it. May God bless you and give you strength. Victor Chobin. And that is all of the public comment.
Okay, and did anybody squeeze in just before the wire on a hands up if, or anybody wished to speak tonight? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next item.
I do not see any at this time.
All right, next item, please.
Our next item is consent calendar items six and seven.
Yeah, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Bruins. Tim, did you?
Sure, shared it with me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is public hearing. The subject is Final CARES Act Amendment Number Four to the 2020-24 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Action Plan for CDBG CV III Funding, Amendment One to the 2021 Action Plan and 2022 Action Plan and Funding allocations for the Community Development Block Grant Program. There are three resolutions for council's consideration tonight regarding the CARES Act.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Cotter is from the Housing Division. I'm the Housing and Human Services Program Coordinator, and this is the second meeting to review the CDBG allocations for next program year, allocate the remaining CBE funds, and then also consider an amendment to increase the amount of funding to this signalized intersection improvement project. And as Amy mentioned, this is a public hearing. So just a little bit of background, Citrus Heights is an entitlement community, so we receive an annual amount of funding of about $600,000 a year. We also recently received a special allocation through the CARES Act of CDBG CV funding. So prior to each program year, before the city is allowed to access its funding, we have to adopt an action plan that outlines how, what activities we're going to do for that year and how much funding we're going to allocate to each of the activities. In July, we issued a notice of funding availability for the CV funds that are remaining and also the 2022 Public Service Funds. In September, the Quality of Life Committee met with staff, and we developed draft funding recommendations. And then in October, earlier this month, the City Council held the first public hearing to receive feedback on the draft funding recommendations. Since that time, we have not received any comments or feedback on the draft allocations, and this meeting is to review the final funding recommendations, which are the same as the ones proposed to you at the last meeting. So here's a look at the proposed recommendations. As a reminder, this includes the remaining CV funds and then also the funds that we anticipate getting for next program year in 2022. So there's a total amount of $327,000 for the remaining CV funds, and then about $90,000 is what we're anticipating in public service funding for next year. So many of these applicants that are recommending funding are people who already receive funding from the city, nonprofits, but there are two new ones, Pride Industries, which took over the Sylvan Job Center, and then Eco App Performance, which we did not recommend funding at this time. So I'm open and available for questions if you have any, and if not, I'll move on.
Any questions for Stephanie? No questions?
Okay, great. So the remaining funding would go to the General Services Department for projects that have been identified in the capital improvement program. And the proposed actions that we're requesting you to approve tonight, as I mentioned, there's three of them. So the three resolutions include the resolution to award the rest of the CDBG CV funding, the amendment to the 2021 Action Plan, which is the current year action plan, to increase the funding to the signalized intersection improvement project, and then lastly, the 2022 Action Plan and funding allocations for next year. So the recommendations are listed here for your consideration. The first one before I move on to the other ones is the public hearing, so I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I will open the public hearing. And looking for anybody who wishes to comment on this item here in the room, or any raised hands?
I don't have any speaker sheets, and I don't see any raised hands.
And this is your last chance. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And...
Thank you, Mayor. The recommendations, the three resolutions are listed on the screen for your consideration, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Of item one? I think we got to take them separately.
We got to take step...
Yeah. This is one of those, we got to read them all.
Move approval. Adopt a resolution approving CARES Act Amendment Number Four to the 2020-24 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Action Plan for the Cor- Plan and 2020 Action Plan for the Coronavirus CDGBG-CV3 Funding.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move approval of adopting a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the 2021 CDBG Action Plan.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, seconded by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Nope. It also passes unanimously. Who wants the long one?
I think Portia does.
I move approval of adopting a resolution for the City Council, Citrus Heights, approving the 2022 Community Development Block Grant and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all contracts necessary to implement said plan.
Motion by Middleton?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Bruins.
Yeah.
Thirded by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Nope. We are unanimous on that one as well. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cotter. And we're on to the regular calendar.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is Amendment to Residential Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services Agreement with Allied Waste Services of North America to provide organics collection and related services required by SB 1383. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to the 2016 amended residential solid waste and recycling collection services contract with Allied Waste Services of North America, subject to the outcome of a Proposition 218 public hearing on the rate increases, and to schedule the public hearing for January 27, 2022, to receive written protests from property owners affected by the proposed rate increases as prescribed by Proposition 218.
Evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mary Poole here with General Services, along with Carrie Baxter from R3 Consulting Group. Also with us tonight is Tony Perez, the General Manager of Republic Services, and Anna Lillian, who is the Municipal Services Manager. The item before you tonight is the next step in completing multiple requirements under SB 1383, the state's mandatory unfunded organics recycling mandate. As you may recall, staff has been methodically taking steps to ensure the city is in compliance with CalRecycle regulations and state law. Tonight, following up on the July 22 study session with the City Council, we continue to be focused on the residential aspect of mandatory organics recycling collection. And with that in mind, we will touch briefly on the overall jurisdictional requirements and where we are in the process. We will also quickly review again the need for a negotiated amendment to the current collection services agreement with Republic Services, go through a brief revisit of the negotiation process, which led to the recommended program changes, and ultimately, we are asking the City Council to take action on the proposed amendment tonight. This slide is just a reminder of the process we've been going through over the past two years, with the July 22 study session, the most recent discussion. At the study session, we did receive council direction, which provided the framework for the residential amendment that is before you tonight. And then the staff recommendation is on this slide, and we'll bring it up again at the end. R3 Consulting Group has been assisting staff with this entire effort, and Carrie Baxter is going to take us through the key negotiation elements, and then I will close it at the end.
Thank you, Mary, and good evening, Mayor and council members. To start, since we've covered this so much in detail at previous meetings, I'll just provide you with a brief summary of SB 1383 again. This unfunded mandate establishes methane emission reduction targets for the state to reduce short-lived climate pollutants in California's economy. As a reminder, the state's defined organic waste to include yard waste, yard clippings, leftover food scraps and food soil papers, as well as lumber, textile paper, and cardboard. There's six programs that the jurisdictions throughout California will have to implement to avoid enforcement action. This includes weekly collection of organic waste, beginning January 1, 2022, edible food recovery program, where the city is identifying edible food generators, and will be required to enforce contract requirements between the generator and the recovering organization. Also, beginning January 1, 2022, for the largest of those generators, conducting outreach and education to the community about the changes to the collection program and the requirements under this mandate, procurement of recovered organic products, which is mandating purchasing of recycled paper product and tracking all those purchases within SB 1383 implementation record, securing capacity, that the city must access existing capacity for edible food recovery, and also expanding infrastructure needs for processing of the material, the organic material that's being disposed, and then monitoring and complying specific enforcement penalties, which is coming down further in 2024. Based on the city's compliance plan that was submitted to CalRecycle, we updated the solid waste ordinance and the commercial solid waste franchise agreement updates, and then the commercial haulers have delivered organic and recycling containers to those customers that weren't in compliance with state law. And then what we're here for tonight is to discuss the draft amended and restated franchise agreement and new organics collection services needed to meet SB 1383 requirements. So the city has had a long-term franchise agreement with Republic Services that expires in 2027. Based on the organic waste definition from the state, the city's current residential program includes the collection of yard trimmings on a bi-weekly basis in the green cart, and paper and cardboard are collected in the city's blue recycling carts. However, with food waste being introduced into, within SB 1383, the current agreement would, will need to be changed to work in the collection of both food waste and green waste. Over the last nine months, we've been working with Republic in good faith to negotiate a contract that meets that requirement. So key components of the negotiations included collection carts and, and collection and cart options, processing options, outreach and education plan, additional republic staff to assist city with required route monitoring and reporting requirements, and the implementation schedule to meet SB 1383 timeline. So tonight, we are recommending approval of the draft amended and restated agreement that's been negotiated with Republic, and city staff is also requesting a hearing to be scheduled in January and send out Prop 218 notices. After conducting the hearing, the new rates and services will become effective July 1, So during the negotiations, city staff's goals were to maintain high service levels at the most cost-effective rates. As Citrus Heights has not raised rates beyond CPI since 2006. In fact, customer rates even went down five percent for two consecutive years, in 2013 and 2014. That's very significant. Not very many cities see that. As you can see on the screen here, rates today are only about a dollar higher than they were in 2010, and that's an average of an increase of about nine to twelve cents per month on an annual basis over the last eleven years. So the key to all of this is that the current collection services in the green cart need to change from a bi-weekly collection of yard trimmings to a weekly collection that includes both yard trimmings and food waste. So our negotiations were centered around that, making that happen at the most cost-effective As shown in this table, most residents are subscribed to the 64-gallon container for collection for garbage. Current collection rates for garbage recycling and green waste cart is $22.82. Contractually, the city is obligated to approve a rate adjustment that ranges between 1.75 and 3.5% effective January 1, which is based on a CPI adjustment. After reviewing the Labor, Bureau of Labor Index that indicated over a 3.5% increase over the last year, so that means a 3.5% increase this January, and that, so that's been calculated, and that's what's showing in the center column for effective January 1, 2022. The remaining 26% would take effect in July, and the proposed rate adjustment would, in total, between those two adjustments, take place July 1 for a total of about $7.10, or $14 per billing cycle from the current rates. So the proposed rates are based on new SB 1383 compliant programs with costs that include three additional trucks and drivers, a part-time route auditor and reporting staff, customer outreach and education, including the delivery of kitchen pails to each customer, additional outreach campaigns through the remaining term of the contract, as well as changing in cost for processing the recycling and organic materials and the administration of the program. The majority of these costs are due to the change in processing of organic waste, which is when you change that food, or add the food to the green waste, which currently the organics are taken to Silver Ranch and of land applied. Once the food's introduced into the mix, the organic waste still need to be collected weekly and go to a permitted facility to process the material. The approximate cost of that is over $2 million per year. One of the impacts of the organics program we wanted to evaluate was the impact of the garbage and recycling trucks on city streets. Oh, sorry, we talked about that last time. We'll definitely bring that forward next. After all is said and done, Citrus Heights is at the lower end of the spectrum in the region, as it compares to refuse collection rates. As I mentioned earlier, the city is contractually obligated to approve a rate adjustment each January. So the comparison of a 64-gallon cart rate includes the 3.5% adjustment in January, and then the remaining 26% effective July 1. Please note, Ranch of Cordova is actually going to City Council on Monday night as well. That rate has not been finalized or approved yet, but it is being presented on Monday night. Other agencies throughout the region and the state have been exploring options to reduce their curbside or appointment collection programs. In general, reducing services has been found to meet agency requirements, to not, sorry, to not meet agency requirements and objectives, or be cost-effective. But they are still required to maintain compliance. So on this slide, just as a reminder, during negotiations, we looked at a number of mitigation rate impacts, including reducing services, doing fewer neighborhood cleanup events, and eliminating oil and sharps collections. Three options that we looked at in more detail were a free dump coupon provided to every resident, eliminating one of the three neighborhood cleanup events. And the third option was to change, charge for additional organics containers, rather than having a second container for free. So after an extensive review of options, staff is recommending the following program for City Council approval. This program includes changing from bi-weekly green waste collection to weekly organics green and food collection. By changing from the bi-weekly collection to a weekly collection, customers will, in essence, receive double the service in their green cart. Staff's recommending removing the second free organics cart and offering additional carts to those customers that need them for an additional, need that additional service for $14 a month. All other services would remain the same, including the extra leaf bags pickup from November to January, the three neighborhood cleanup events, the battery collection, used oil collection, and sharps collection, the drop-off options at NARS and other county facilities for HHW, and services also include education and outreach, customer service, a guide calendar, compost workshops, student education curriculum, and assistance. And with that, and, oh, sorry, flipping through and playing way too fast. Pass it back over to Mary.
Yeah, thank you so much. So can you go back to the summary side, Carrie?
I'm sorry, yes.
So in summary, you know, as you all know, organics collection services are required by SB 1383, subject to a significant penalty if the city does not comply. The negotiated amendment is necessary to provide that services. This amendment that is before you, the terms provide the lowest-cost options and preserves the existing services package. It meets state's compliance requirements as per the plan that the city submitted to CalRecycle. And importantly, Citrus Heights rates remain among the lowest in the region. Certainly, they look to be the lowest right now, but we'll wait and see as these amendments and service changes continue to roll out over the next six months. So the next steps would be to approve the amended agreement and schedule the public hearing, which we're asking for you to do tonight. Then with that direction, the staff will prepare and mail out the Prop 218 notice, schedule the public hearing for January 27, 2022, and then upon that being approved, then the launch of the education campaign will begin in February, with new rates and services becoming effective in July. And then just to return to the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the resolution and then schedule the public hearing. And with that, both Carrie and I are available for questions, and Tony Perez and Anna from Republic Services are also available.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Carrie, for your presentation. Questions? Tim?
I've got a couple. I'm a little unclear on, so can you tell me where I, if I have cardboard that I want to dispose of, which cart will that go into?
That's a very good question. So cardboard will continue to go into your blue cart. Plus, we are allowed to set cardboard and fold it, break it down, and set it at the side of our blue carts for collection. You could also, if you need to, use, set it out in your neighborhood cleanup.
Next question is, if I've got a piece of wood that I've removed the nails from, where does that go?
So wood, in general, would go into your green organics cart, as long as it fits with the lid closed, and if it does not, then it would have to be part of your neighborhood cleanup process. And the neighborhood cleanup process then takes it through a, a system where they're taking the, the organics materials out of that stream.
And my final question is, if I have a neighbor who's no longer able to get their carts to the street, is there any accommodation from Republic Services for that?
That's a great question, and thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely. Part of our service contract with Republic Services includes a walkout service for those who are eligible, and if there is no one else in the house that's able to take that cart out, then the resident can apply for a walkout service directly with Republic. They will come pick up the cart from the yard, bring it down, and then return it back to the side of the house or wherever it is that it's kept. They don't go in the backyard.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mary.
Ruth?
Yeah. So currently, if I have some organic waste left over from eating, I throw it in my garbage can or my garbage bag. I tie that off, and I put it in my garbage can, and it gets picked up. And so now what I'm going to have to do is throw it in with a bunch of grass and stuff like that, and, you know, at some point, probably watch it leak and attract all kinds of nice flies and whatnot. And for that privilege, I'm going to have to pay 30% more. I find the whole thing just over-the-top ridiculous. It's, it's a state-mandated thing, it's unfunded. I'm going to vote... I'm going to vote no on it. It's just symbolically, I know it's going to pass and I know we're going to move forward. But it is absolutely crazy that, that this system, that somebody, you know, thinks that this is a good thing, that, you know, throwing all this garbage, literally garbage, into a can is going to be a wonderful thing. And when it hits, you know, 105 degrees in August and all that stuff's cooking in there, it's just going to be wonderful. And I don't know where you put your garbage cans, but if you put it like in the fence outside and your neighbors are trying to enjoy their yard outside next to it because of how, whatever your structure is of your property, it's going to be terrible. It's going to be just god awful. And so, you know, what do we do? Well, if we don't, if we don't pass it, you know, then who knows? The state comes along and, and, you know, hits us with fines and stuff like that. But what are we going to do if, if the citizens don't go for it and they turn it down through Prop 218? Then we're going to be on the hook, I think, right, for the, the $2 million a year through the general fund or whatever?
Good question. I think, I wonder if Mary could answer that.
But anyway, yeah, Mary, I would like an answer on that. But I'm going to vote no on it. And just kind of symbolically that it's an unfunded state mandate and gee, whatever happened to that not being allowed? So that's it.
Thanks, Brett. Is my understanding if a majority of the account holders submit a written protest, then that would defeat the proposed rate increase? And at that point, we would have to go back to Cal Recycle and negotiate with them about how we would proceed. And I don't know, Ryan, if you want to add anything, but that's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's a majority protest. They need to actually submit opposition to it. So it's not, you don't need to have a majority approve it, just a majority of the residents oppose it, which is usually pretty unlikely, but it has happened on occasion.
Will this be a card that's sent out with the ability to return it back as yes or no? Or will it be just a notification and then people have to jump through hoops to put together some sort of letter and send it back as a protest?
It's currently structured as a notice where we provide the information that they need to submit back in a form, form batch.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I just had a procedural question. I know, you know, on pickup day, we have two trucks depending on what week it is. Is this going to mean three trucks?
Every other week, yes.
So we're going to have increased use of fossil fuels to pick up some eggs and potatoes?
So why would we have three trucks if we have, so we have garbage, oh, garbage is green and recycled? Okay.
Right. So currently, we have alternating recycle and green waste. Now we will have green waste and garbage every week and alternating recycle weeks.
You know, I, I hear what Brett is saying, you know, none of us asked for this. This is more of a comment, it's not a question. But it is here, you know, and so it's unfortunate that we have to comply with something that I wonder just how much of an impact it will have because I think people will continue to put garbage down garbage disposals. Those of us who compost will still continue to compost. So, so Mary, I guess I do have a question is, is this going to somehow be measured? How are they going to determine whether a municipality is in compliance with this?
Another good question. So we actually will be required to monitor the routes and that's part of the cost of this amendment is to have Republic Services assist with some route monitoring. Well, they'll, they will be testing contents or monitoring contents along some percentage of the routes every year. In addition, the material that's processed is weighed and reported to Cal Recycle, so there is a, a, a reporting mechanism in place. The city, however, is going to continue to advocate for composting and reducing your organic load however you can and not putting, you know, just putting what you have to in the recycling organics container. So that's definitely our first line of effort in reducing organics waste.
Thank you. So I just also just want to comment, I know this was not an easy recommendation to craft and I want to thank Tony Perez and Mary and our, the R3 group for the work they've done on this. We really have had a sweetheart deal for a long time with our rates on, on solid waste disposal, all the various cans. And, and we continue to have the lowest rates even with this, with this increase. And that has provided the citizens of Citrus Heights some extraordinary services at a very low cost that you don't see in other, in other communities. And a big one being the three times a year curbside pickup where we can put things out on the street, gets picked up, taken away, we never see it again. There are other communities that would, are very jealous that we have this and we yet pay the lowest rates in the region. So I just want to acknowledge the hard work that our, Mary Poole and our staff, along with Republic, have done over the years to keep our rates low and to keep our services high. And so I'm glad to see that those services will not be diminished in any way. Don't like paying more for something I don't want to have, but it's, it's been foisted upon us. And so I think it's, you know, time for us to vote. What do you think, Steve?
Yeah, unless there's, I hadn't heard from Portia. I just wanted to check. If you didn't have anything, that's fine. Anybody else want to add anything?
Okay, so I will take this one then. So I, I move that we approve staff's recommendation to institute a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights to authorize the interim city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to the 2016 amended residential solid waste and recycling collection services contract with Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, subject to the outcome of a Prop, Proposition 218 public hearing on the rate increases. And then to schedule the public hearing for January 27, 2022, to receive the written protests from property owners affected by the proposed rate increases as prescribed by Proposition 218.
Second.
Motion by Bruin, seconded by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And the, I didn't say aye, but three, three, two, the motion carries. Kind of wanted to vote no, too.
I think we all did.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you see what would happen if the majority of us voted no?
I was kind of curious, too, but I think, I don't think that would be pretty either. Yeah, it's why even vote, you know? Okay, next item, please. I'm sorry.
Our next item is department reports, number 10. The subject is financial update by the Administrative Services Department.
If you could turn on your microphone.
I'm sorry. I am Bill Zanoni, Interim Administrative Services Director. Tammy DiSardi, Finance Manager is here also. Tammy worked with, with me on, on putting this information together. What we would like to do this evening is give you a financial update on the city's There we go. We've got three, three different areas that we'd like to cover fairly quickly this evening. The first is an update on the general fund for last fiscal year. We are, we've closed the fiscal year, our fiscal year ends June 30. These are preliminary numbers. They shouldn't change very much, but until the auditors finish their work, and we actually have auditors doing their field work with us this week, once they're finished, whatever, if they do make any adjustments, they should be minor. And then we will be coming to you with a final audited financial report probably in December. Second thing we'd like to walk you through this evening is information on our first quarter performance for the general fund for the period from July 1st through September 30th. And then finally, give you a quick update on our 10-year financial forecast. So for the general fund for last fiscal year, our operating revenue, we budgeted revenue of $30.7 million. We ended the year with revenue of $33.8, so our revenues, operating revenues were 3.8 million, $3.1 million over the amount that we budgeted. In addition to that, the city received two one-time federal funding dollars. In last fiscal year, we received CARES Act funding of $1.1 million, which was used to help fund police department operating costs. And we also received reimbursement of $2 million from FEMA and Cal OES for the cost of the Great Plates Program. And there's expenditures on the other side that pretty much matched that amount.
So they actually paid us back?
Pardon?
Yeah, they actually paid us back?
They have paid us. They, there's a small amount they owe us, but they've guaranteed that it's coming. They've approved it and so we've recorded as our revenues. So yes. For our, our general fund, again, our bottom line operating revenues were $3.1 million more than the amount we budgeted. One of the largest pieces of that difference is sales tax. Sales tax is, you will recall, or you may recall, when we originally, when you originally adopted the last two-year budget, we had a, a sales tax revenue estimate of $12.5 million. When we came back to you in June of 2020, when COVID happened, we, we, along with other cities, projected a reduction in sales tax revenue. In reality, what happened in this city as well as other cities is people stayed home. They didn't go out and shop, but they did shop from home. And so our sales tax revenue actually increased a little bit last fiscal year rather than decreasing. So sales tax revenue was up $2.2 million over budget. The other significant items were, we saw a reduction in utility users tax and we've seen that drop over time. And that is mainly a function of more and more people relying on cellular phones rather than landlines. So we're not getting the, the taxes for that that, that we have in the past. We saw a significant increase in our building permit and plan check fees last year. Those, there were several new developments, one of them being Mitchell Farms. The Community Development Department is projecting that that revenue will continue into this fiscal year, the first portion of this fiscal year, and then, and then drop. This is not an ongoing revenue at this level, but it was last fiscal year. We saw the, next to the bottom arrow under community center rentals, the community center was pretty much closed last year due to COVID. So we typically receive about $450,000 a year and last year we received pretty much zero dollars. And then the bottom line is other revenue. And this is, these are one-time revenues that the city gets for things such as reimbursement for damage to city property, reimbursements for insurance claims. They're not something that we typically budget at a high level because we can't count on them and it varies from year to year. Last year, we received more than what we had, more than what we had budgeted and more than, than what we have received in prior years. On the expenditure side, excuse me, our budget for operating expenditures was $34.4 million. We actually ended the year with $3.1 million less in expenditures than was budgeted. And then separate from that, because I didn't feel it was fair to add that into the, the number above, it distorts it, we, we did incur costs of $2 million for the Great Plates Program, which was not a budgeted expense. So the bottom line expenditures were 1.1 million, but the, the big difference is under expenditures in, in operating, in operating departments. And you can see here that the, the three main areas where there were under expenditures were in the Administrative Services Department. The major portion of that was in human resources. We, we did less testing last year. We did less, less recruiting on, on the police department side. So we had less background checks, which is significant expense. Police Department, as you're well aware, was holding positions vacant last year. So their police department underspent its budget by about $2.7 million. And the Community Development Department underspent its budget by about $265,000. The major portion of this was in planning and it was from a vacant position. And pretty much through most of the departments, because of COVID, departmental operating expenses were less. There was in pretty much each department, less office supplies, less travel and training. Just generally, we could go line by line, but the bottom line was overall last year savings of $3.1 million. And this just breaks that $3.1 million down by category. The major portion of that was in salaries and benefits from, from vacant positions and then operating costs. And we, we did underspend the community support budget last year. So comparing the budget overall, our total revenue was $36.9 million, including everything, compared to a budget of $30.7 million. Our total expenditures were $33.3 million, again, including the Great Plates Program. So we budgeted, or we had, we budgeted a operating shortfall of $3.7 million last year. We actually ended the year with a surplus of $3.6 million. The adopted budget provided for utilizing $1.2 million of the line of credit to help balance the budget. We, we didn't need to access that, so that's a good thing. So we did, we did end the year with a, a surplus of $3.6 million. So that's good news. So that's the good news. So now going into the current, the current fiscal year, as of the first quarter, our, our annual budgeted revenue for this fiscal year is $35.2 million. You can see the largest source of revenue right now to the city is sales tax at $13.2 million. Our second largest revenue source right now is motor vehicle license fees of a little bit over $9 million. As of the end of the first quarter, we had received $3 million or 8.7%. So 25% of the way through the year, our revenues were 8.7%. So that is typical for us. You can see the major areas where we are under, if you were to straight-line this and assume it would be 25% at this point of the year. Sales tax, we've only received a million of the 13 million that we've budgeted. We get sales tax two months behind. So we pretty much only received one payment for this year. So it's, anything that came in before that was, was recorded back to last year. So sales tax is always slow to come in. Franchise fees, our franchise fee agreements provide for most of that revenue to come in at the, the end of the fiscal year. And the big one is our motor vehicle in Lufy's, that $9 million. We get half of it in January and the other half in May. So between, between July and when we get the, this first payment, this motor vehicle payment in January, we're kind of in a dry spell, if you want to call it that, and we're kind of running off of reserves. kind of running off of reserves for a while. Even when we begin to receive property tax revenue, that won't come in until, the first payment will come in December, second payment will come in several months later. So this is just a function of how our revenues come in. It's fairly typical, and it demonstrates why we need a healthy level of reserves to carry us during this period. On the expenditure side, as of the end of the first quarter, or 25% of the way through the year, we'd spent 25.3% of the budget. So we're pretty much where we should be. There's two, two departments in here where it looks like they're overspending their budget. One of them is my department, Administrative Services, and the other is non-departmental. The reason for that is in the Administrative Services Department is the risk management budget. And in July and August, we pay our annual insurance premiums, workers' comp and liability. So it's heavy loaded up front. And in the non-departmental budget, you can see we've spent 64% of the budget already, but included in that $1.5 million expenditure figure is about $1.1 million, I believe, for our, the payment we have to make to CalPERS in July for our unfunded liability. We have to pay them upfront every year. If we don't pay them in July, we pay them throughout the year, and they charge a 7% interest on that. So.
So the, on those items, the budget over time will catch up with the expenditures that have already been made?
Yes. So just to summarize where we are as of, as of September 30th, or where we were as of September 30th, we'd received 8.7% of our revenue. We'd spent 25.3% of our budget. Overall, for the year, the budget projects a shortfall, pretty much a balanced budget, shortfall of $100,000, but we think we'll, we'll more than make that up. But as of September 30th, our expenditures exceeded our revenues by $5.8 million. So it was great that we ended last year with a surplus of $3.6 million. But for the first quarter, we were upside down, if you will, by 5.5, $5.8 million. And again, our, because our revenues are cyclical, as far as when our sales tax and, and these other revenues come in, it will be the same with property tax revenue. Because the general fund is, about three-quarters of the general fund is labor-related costs, that is, is fairly stable on a monthly basis. And with the exception of unforeseen emergencies, last year was a good example with the Great Plates Program. We didn't anticipate that. We had to fund that upfront. That was a $2 million expense, and was, came right out of general fund cash, and then we had to wait and continue to wait until we finally got reimbursed from, from FEMA. That, that happens with grants. The general fund with, general fund advances cash for grants, and then we wait to be reimbursed. So again, we, we rely fairly heavily, especially during the first half of the fiscal year, on our reserves. This is a chart, an update to a chart that we showed you last year. This just, you can see our general fund cash balance. The blue dotted line is zero. So we, la, last year, between September and March, the general fund was in a negative cash position. Our cash builds up, and this reflects our, our surplus, operating surplus from last year. And you can see now it's starting to come down again. When we run this again at mid-year, you will see it.
The December number looks like my bank account right before payday.
Right?
Yeah, empty.
Right. It's not heading the right direction, and it will continue in that direction for the next several months. And then, then when we get an influx of, of cash with the, the motor vehicle fees, and we start to get more sales tax, then it'll, it'll start to pop up again. But it's when it's below zero, we really don't want it, it shouldn't never go below zero. And that is just a picture example of why we really need to, to focus on our, our general fund reserves. Any questions on, on that?
Any questions, Bill?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay. So in looking back at the original operating revenue for 2021, it's like the fifth page in. When we look at building permits, we, you referenced Mitchell Farms, explaining why we had such a huge difference. It's almost two and a half times what was originally budgeted as far as revenue coming in.
Yes.
But we knew that project was coming for a long time. It's been in process for a long, long time. And I'm just curious how that, how that happened. I mean, that's a significant difference. And the rest of the numbers are real, you know, they're some, somewhat close.
Right.
But that one's pretty far off. The other question I had is on the other, when you list your other revenue at $488,000, what is that? What is the other revenue? What's in that category?
So that, that is, so on, let me start with your first, your first question on the, on the building permit. I don't believe we knew exactly when, when that, when those permits were going to be We, what we could have done, what we did not do, we could have come back, typically we come to, to council at mid-year and at mid-cycle and adjust the budget. We could have adjusted it when we knew that that revenue was coming in, and that wasn't done. I think the goal going forward, I believe, would be to, to continue to provide you with quarterly reports like this. And when we do see a significant change in revenues or, or a significant unforeseen expenditure, that we adjust the budget accordingly so that it's, it is more reflective. That wasn't done in the last two years.
So my concern is, we made a lot of decisions based on this information that we had at the time. We laid people off. We did some, a lot of things were based on the numbers we had, and now we're kind of looking back, and we probably could have saved ourselves maybe a little bit of hard work.
I don't, I don't believe so. And let's look at the test. These are one-time revenues. These aren't revenues, these aren't, if, these aren't revenues that we're going to continue to see on an ongoing basis. If there were, I would agree with you 100%, but they're, they are one-time. And when we look at the 10-year forecast, that might, that might help, maybe not, but that. The other, the other revenue is, it's probably 20 different categories, but it, they are, we receive reimbursement from our insurance carrier for, when we have employees on workers' comp. We get reimbursed for damage to city property. I can go through and prepare a list for you, but there's, it's just miscellaneous, a lot of small items. And they just came in higher last year than what, what we had anticipated. We don't, we don't expect to see that every year. We don't budget for it because it's not anything that we can count on.
Well, I was just going to make that point. There are probably things that, that we're giving an educated guess based on last year, prior years.
We look at historical trends and what, and what, what makes that up.
We're not expecting things to happen.
Right.
One other thing I was made aware of, aware of, despite the Mitchell Farms development, also because of COVID, people stayed home and they, they remodeled.
Projects.
Projects. And so the building department told me they were swamped with those.
Building department was busy all year long.
Yes.
And, and they're busy so far this year, but they are projecting that by, by December, that that is, it's starting to slow by December, that it's going to.
It's slowing.
So again, it's one-time revenue. It's good, and it's carrying us forward into, into the next year, but.
Right. As my grandma would say, you know, it's counting your chickens before they hatch, right?
Right. Which again, is, with this, I, I think what I was hoping to show with this chart is that, that revenue put us in a better position going into this year than where we were last year at this time. Because last year in September, the general fund was overdrawn.
That's, that does look better.
Okay. So the 10-year, 10-year financial forecast was last reviewed by the city council in January. We've gone through and updated, we've added a year onto the end. The last one that you saw ended in fiscal year 2930. Now we're going out to 2030, 31. We've incorporated the adopted two-year budget into this document. We've updated our pension unfunded liability numbers. We've gotten, every year we get updated figures from CalPERS. We get that in usually August or September, so that's incorporated in here. We've included the, the first portion that you've allocated, the $5.3 million of ARPA funding for police staffing. That's, it's in the budget, and it's included in, in this, in this financial forecast. We've also added partial funding for streets. And when we look at the numbers, what I, what I did is I, as you'll recall, I believe, our, our current need for funding for streets, and Regina Cave explained this in detail, and she can certainly explain it much better than me, but in order to maintain our streets at the level that they currently are, we need to fund about $7 million a year over a period of a number of years. In order to increase our street index above what it is, and to, to improve it, that $7 million a year figure should be in the neighborhood of $12 million a year. What, what, in the last forecast, we had nothing in here. What I, what I have plugged into these numbers are the amount that I, based on what our, we're forecasting our revenues to be, and what we're forecasting our expenditures to be, what we can fit in there without having our reserves drop below the minimum level. And I'll show you those numbers in just a second. And then the last thing that is, has been added from what you saw last, or earlier this year, excuse me, is Auburn Boulevard. The city, the city is going to be obligated to make a, a match of $4 million for Auburn Boulevard. When we, when we issued the line of credit, that line of credit was sized with the intent several years ago of using $4 million of the line of credit for this project. The line of credit has got, has to be repaid by September of 2024. Excuse me. So if we draw it down now, we've got to pay it back in three years. So for purposes of this plan, I've assumed that we would fund this, this project with Auburn Boulevard, which again, depending how you look at it, there goes our $3.6 million one-time surplus from last year. But, so that's what's changed since last year. This is at a, at a high level. Included in your packet was a more detailed version. I didn't try and put that up on the screen because it's hard to read. With the exception of the streets and Auburn Boulevard, this is not significantly different than what you saw, what we, what we went through in, earlier this year. What, what is in here right now are street repairs of $600,000 in '23, '24. And what, and the way that I came up with these numbers is I, I tried to keep our bottom line ending reserve balance from dipping below our minimum reserve. And the city council policy for general fund reserves is that reserves will not drop below 17% of general fund expenditures. That is the minimum that's recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association as, as a bare minimum. And in fact, we're going to, our intent is to have a discussion with the finance committee and with the council later this year about possibly increasing that to a little bit higher level that's going to be a little bit, provides us a little bit more of a safety net, just based on our cash flow needs. But, but based on the current reserve policy, weekend fund, and based upon this level of revenues and expenditures, somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 million a year for street repairs. So over this, over this 10-year window, what is in here right now is $17.9 million for streets. If we were to, to fund what we believe we should fund, and what we, $12 million a year, so in this document is 17.9, $12 million a year would be 120 million. So we're, we're not anywhere near there, but we at least have something to, to start.
And you're not counting for street repairs the gas tax money?
No.
SB1.
Yeah. Well, and there was the original gas tax.
Right. That's right. Correct.
So that's about.
Measure A.
Yes.
So we at least have a line in here for this now. It's something, if our, if we do see additional revenue, there's a, there's a place to put it. And then there's, there's a line in here for Auburn Boulevard. We had talked at one point about possibly utilizing the sale of Sylvan property for that, but until we know that that is a given. I have this in here in '23, '24. In the CIP, it, the, it shows that we may start to spend some of those dollars in '22, '23. So some of this may shift a little, a year earlier. But again, it, these are two major capital items that we added in.
So Bill, I just want to clarify. So when we look at Measure A and SB1 over the next two years, we're about $5.3 million for roads.
Right.
Plus, so you're looking at, this is another $600,000, so we're looking at
Almost six.
Almost 6 million for roads over the next two years, including the SB1 and Measure A fund.
I believe what Regina, what General Services requires is in addition to that.
Okay.
That, that doesn't cut into it. It's in addition to those dollars.
And in this 10-year forecast, you're not showing the sale of Sylvan, because that's a one-time expense?
I'm not showing it.
So that'll be, okay.
No.
Or not expense?
Right.
Thank you. It was an expense now. I make a little money on it.
So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are, we are anticipating meeting with our sales tax consultant within the next several weeks to get an updated sales task, sales tax forecast. We'll see if that changes at all. We'll be coming back to council in February with a mid-year budget review, and then we'll have six months worth of actual. And so we will update this again and give you a, another updated version in the next three, four months.
The, the high price of gas has an impact on that, too.
Oh, here.
I'm sorry.
I mean, the high price of gas.
That's right.
You know, increases our sales tax, too. Not that I want to pay.
Right.
$4 for gas, but we are, and it does have an impact on.
Yes.
Positive impact on our sales tax.
Brett, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good report. You know, it is, it's nice to see that we have more than we expected, and we spent less than we thought we would. It doesn't get any better than that, I think. And those two things together, if I did my math right, came out to 7.3 million as a change in our position. 6.2 extra dollars, million, and 1.1 less in expenses. And so I'm a little disappointed on the, the, the 3 million, or whatever it is right now that's, that we're showing in the, the fund. I was hoping when I first saw this that we might be able to come back and say, well, why don't we pay down that line of credit then that's on the Sylvan property? There's no point in having millions of dollars in the bank and owing somebody, some money. But I don't think we're there yet, it looks like, from what you're saying.
I don't think we're there yet, but that's something, something we can watch. We have, we owe $3.5 million roughly to pay off the line of credit. We have a million and a half next year, and then 2 million. We have a million and a half next year and then $2 million the following year is what we're, but the sooner we pay it off, the better.
Yeah, and I, I would just say this, that I think if we can, you know, get some of those numbers back, as you said, as we go into the next quarter or whatever, that, and if there's a, a delay in that, that property being sold, that, that's something that I would hope the council would want to look at is drawing that, taking that line of credit down.
Sure.
Because we're paying interest.
Yes.
And we certainly aren't making hardly any money with money that's sitting in the bank because of the rules with that. So, hopefully, that's something that we'll be able to do.
We're paying interest on it. We're not planning to utilize it, so.
And so, but, but thank you for bringing back a report that is much rosier than I think any of us thought it was going to be at this time. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I think we got through the worst of it. I hope we got through the worst of it. You just don't know what's around the next corner. Amy, can we go to the next item, please?
The next item is Department Report Number 11. The subject is Holiday Program by the Police Department.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Amy, if you would like to bring up the slides, that'd be great. Wonderful. So, good evening again, members of the council and Mayor Miller. I'm Tiffany Campbell with the Special Services Division of the Police Department, which is led by Commander Jason Russo. And tonight, as we're wrapping up our truck or treat, I'm here to present to you what our annual Citrus Heights Operation Cheer rollout plan is going to look like this year. So, Operation Holiday Cheer, which is warmly known in the past as our holiday refer program, will kick off Monday, November 1st and run through December 16th. I'll be the program manager again this year, and our point of contact will be Teresa Dawn. Next. We'll start tonight's presentation with me telling you about 2020's great success. We had our first-ever drive-through family pickup, which was held at the City Hall Building. We helped, oh, excuse me, we had 75 generous community donors. We were able to assist 27 families. And this program really lifted the spirit in totality of over 189 children and 44 adults that received meals and gifts and toys, and it's just a phenomenal program to be a part of. We also, in 2020, kicked off our inaugural wave parade, which was held down the, at our Sinai Community Center. So, we're really proud of the new accomplishments that we were able to do together with everyone's help with the COVID environment. So, this coming year, next. We intend to continue to bring goodwill and holiday cheer to our community, and we want to say thanks to our many other generous holiday community helpers. The Operation Holiday Cheer program is made possible because of the foundation and the relationships that have been built over the years with our service clubs, our community members, and the city and police department staff. An absolute success last year, as I mentioned, was our first-ever drive-through family pickup station, and we were using the large conference room as what we warmly called the donation station for all of our holiday helpers to usher out and provide gifts to the 27 adopted families. The spirit in the air when this was happening was just phenomenal, and the community is so grateful for this service. So, again, I'm, it's my pleasure to be a part of this and help to bring this to the community. Next. To summarize our program for everyone, it's a three-phase program that is ultimately managed over six weeks. So, tonight, what I have for you is an explanation to our phases. So, our Phase One pro, part of this program is our application and our family matchup process. The second phase is the donation station, and the third phase is the pickup of the gifts and the wave parade. So, I'll just get into a little bit of detail about this. When we kick off on November 1st through the 14th, that is the window where we will be accepting application by referral, whether it's online or through the mail. But all of this will be available to you on our Citrus Heights PD website or our Citrus Heights City website. And this takes a lot of work with our community members. And I'm so happy to say that new this year, Rotarian Mr. Jeff Slowey, who would be here with me tonight, however, he is away on vacation, but he's graciously offered his time to help take the lead with coordinating the involvement with some of our local service clubs, who really wanted to get involved in a more significant role and help with the behind-the-scenes and the logistics and planning. This is a huge help for all of us here at the Police Department, and it's just a wonderful way to involve more community members. So, this year, I decided to present this to you in the phase, the three-phase program so that you would have a better understanding of how we all work together to make this work, to lift the spirit of everyone within our community. So, back to the Phase One, we're going to handle this portion between November 1st through the 14th, and we're going to match up our families that week of November 15th, and the notification will go out on November 19th. So, the idea behind this is one of our service clubs is going to help lift that. The donation station will begin November 15th through December 15th. That's where we are receiving gifts and food and toys and toiletries from everyone around the community to help supplement the program itself. And if you are interested in donating or being a part of that, we have a way to make an appointment so we can still stay COVID-safe and keep everybody healthy. And then again, we'll have a service club helping with that. We'll put that out on social media as well. And then Phase Three, that's the pickup. That's the wave parade. That is, truth be told, some tears of joy come from all of us, and we all pull together and help provide all of this to the citizens in our community with just an absolute warm hug and show them our gratitude for being part of what we're doing here together. So, the drive-through family pickup will take place again, same as last year. Save the date, December the 16th. Will begin at 10:00 AM, and then we do intend to have our Sinai Community Center wave parade that will also be Thursday, but the time on that will have to be determined, and that is because it's based on the number of families that we have to come through, so we need to work through those logistics. But I'm just very happy to present this to you again and let you know that with the help of everybody in our service clubs, this is what makes this possible, and this is what our community and our city is about, and that's why we are calling it fondly Operation Holiday Cheer. And on the next slide, I have put for you, if, if anyone in the community has questions or maybe if you would like to get involved, to volunteer to assist us, or perhaps you would like to adopt or sponsor a family. The easiest way to reach the Operation Holiday Cheer team is by our dedicated phone line that's listed there on the slide, or you may send an email to OHC@citrusheights.net, and our program contact, program assistant Teresa Dawn, will ensure that you receive the information that you need. So, at this time, again, it's my pleasure to work on this program with everybody in our city and our community, the city staff and our police department. And if there are any questions at all, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any questions, comments for Tiffany? Looking forward to this year's Operation Holiday Cheer.
I just have a quick comment. I'm so proud of our Police Department for putting this together again this year. Tiffany, thank you so much and your team for, for really, really a great effort, and I, I'm, I'm sure this is going to be a huge success this year.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next item.
Our next item is City Manager Items.
No items this evening, council. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Our next item is Items Requested by Council Members Future Agenda Items, and number 12, the subject is Discussion Regarding Renaming of the Citrus Heights Community Center.
Okay, and I'll, I'll start things off. I do think we got a little ahead of ourselves on this, but, because I just really don't know what our options are and where we're at as far as policy for, for naming buildings. But Brett, you brought this, brought this up. Would you like to lead?
Sure. You know, this is kind of born out of, and it's unfortunate. You know, Gene Duncan passed recently, and, you know, I had lunch with Jack Duncan recently, and I talked to him about this idea. And, and hopefully, I don't offend anybody with saying this, but the one thing I did say to him is I don't, I don't take the issue of naming things after people lightly. I, I think it's an incredible honor if somebody does do that, and I think that it should never be done simply because somebody died. And, and so, I just want to make that point, that it's not from that, but it is because of that that I learned more about Gene. And, and, you know, knowing a lot about Gene already, I was amazed at how I, how much I didn't know about Gene. And so, and then we know Jack. You know, Jack's on the Planning Commission, has been very involved in a lot of different things, and between the two of them, they, they've been involved in incredible things, and they've been in the Rotary, the Seroptimus, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and, and Jack was on the Planning Commission. And I mean, these are two people that are, are about as entrenched and synonymous with success of Citrus Heights, you know, that you could probably come up with in our city's history. And I, I think that when I heard the story about, you know, from Henry Tingle, from the former city manager, directly, that the impact that Gene had on how the community center was built and what we enjoy today as opposed to what it was about to be, I, I just see this as a great opportunity to honor two people who have significantly, you know, again, they were involved in these organizations, and there are people that get involved in organizations because they, they love it for their ego. They love to be able to say they're in something or part of something. But these are two people that did stuff. They, you know, they, they didn't, they didn't just be a part of the organization. They used those opportunities and tools to do great things for people throughout Citrus Heights and for Citrus Heights. And, and then the mayor, you know, kind of tops it off two weeks ago with, you know, I didn't know, Jack and Gene Duncan paid for the fountain out in front of the, the community center. I mean, it's just, it, to me, it's just a kind of a, an opportunity to express that appreciation, to, to give them that, that honor. I think it's a great honor. And I wanted to comment on Dr. Jana's, Caprinsi Costa's email. I, I took that with a lot of weight, and, and I agree with her almost entirely on that email that you can look at this in different ways, but I wanted to be clear, I didn't want to drop the name of Citrus Heights from the community center. I would like it to be called the Citrus Heights Jack and Gene Duncan Community Center. So, I'm not looking to drop our identity of Citrus Heights connected to it. And I'm not looking to simply honor these two people because of their activities with the community center. I think the, the community center is the opportunity to do that. And so, I hope that makes sense. Again, this is not something that we've, we've done much in Citrus Heights, very, very, extremely limited, have we taken the opportunity to, to name something in honor of, you know, somebody? And I just think that this is a great opportunity to honor these two people with everything that they've done for us and for the city of Citrus Heights.
Thank you. Tim?
So, I want to thank Councilmember Daniels for bringing this forward. I think it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful tribute, but I, in, in reviewing the, the speaker card that we saw tonight, I think that's a, that is a really great idea to better, might be, it might be a better memorial to name a room after Gene or after Jack so that it, it really does, you know, I can just picture a flyer for somebody promoting their event at the community center that, number one, I think if you said the Citrus Heights Jack and Dean, Gene Duncan Community Center, I think it's too long. People would drop, drop it off. If you had it in there, the, the specific name of the room, I think it, it might be a better memorial to, to remember Gene, and this is what we're, this is the point that we're, we're talking about here, is we're memorializing Gene's Duncan's contribution to our community. So, I think that's, that's something that we should absolutely, I, I think that's a, another really good point that the, the writer mentioned was to do a flash vote and let's involve the community in this discussion. I think it's, it's, it really could be a really wonderful addition to our, to who we are as a city.
Thanks, Tim. Jeanne?
Thank you. You know, this came as a surprise to all of us on the last council meeting. I've known Gene and Jack Duncan and have been friends with them for over 35 years. And I actually took, sat on this for about a week, and then I went and visited Jack. And he was, of course, very flattered that, that Brett would honor them in this way. But I, I had to tell Jack that I could not support naming a building after the Dunkins. And I did say I think it was appropriate for us to honor them in some way for all of their community service. I've seen it firsthand over the years, not only from the city, but through the Chamber of Commerce and the other organizations. But we, looking at this on a, on a broader scale, you know, we're coming up against, up against our 25-year anniversary very, very soon. And I think that as a city, we could use that occasion to honor the Dunkins and other people that have made contributions to making this city what it is today. And so, I would like, I think this should be a community effort. I don't think it should be a one-person-to-one-person effort, and I think as a policy, it's, it's actually dangerous for a council member to go to an individual and to suggest something like this when the community really is who the center is for, and the community should weigh in on this. And so, I had that conversation with Jack. It was not an easy one because I love the man. I love Gene, too, but I really feel this is a bigger event than just what it has, has been presented to us. So, I would like to suggest that we do what we've done in the past, and we, if we, we're going to have a, come up against a, a major anniversary for our city, get some volunteers together, start planning for what we're going to do in 2020, or not 2025, but our 25th anniversary, and let honoring stellar citizens like the Dunkins be part of that. So, I, that's a suggestion I'd like to offer.
Portia, anything?
That was beautifully said, Jeanne, and it was along the same sentiments that I felt, that I know that there's been a process in place when, when we go about doing this, and I want to kind of revisit what that process was. I know that our Police Department has a particular individual's name on it, and I want, you know, I want to know what that process, how do we go about doing that? And I don't, I don't think it happened at a council meeting. I think that you're right, it had some community involvement and support around it. And I think it's a wonderful idea to, to honor these individuals, many of them, who have made the city what it is on our 25th anniversary.
Yeah, I think I'm sharing the sentiment. I mean, we all love Gene. This is, but this is not about any one person. It's, it's about the process. I, I know we struggled. There was a suggestion to name the city hall after Henry Tingle, and, and we really just didn't have a process in place of, you know, how we do it, what the priorities are, that kind of thing. So, I'd like to take a step back and look at those options. I like, I think Jana mentioned it, former councilman Jana in her public comment, but Tim, you also did about looking at the rooms and, and that kind of thing, and we talked about that years ago. So, I think there is a proper way to honor her. I'm just not prepared tonight to, to name the building. And, and I think from what I know with our communications team and marketing and all that, I think they may, may come to us with a recommendation to change it to the Citrus Heights Event Center to have a little bit more marketability for what it truly is. It's, it's an event center. It is our community center, but we'll cross that bridge again when we get to it. So, what's the pleasure of the council here? Take a step back and.
Step back and evaluate it.
I'd say, yeah, I, I think you stated it well. Jana, I think, was very succinct and well-spoken as well. We take a step back at it. We remember that, that we want, that the Dunkins should be part of this, but we look at it as a, more of a community effort on a community-wide basis with some planning and, and have a kind of a community conscience as to what we want this to look like. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, next item, please. And with that, next item, please.
The next item is Item Number 13. Subject is Resolution of the City Council Expressing Support for Citizens' Individual Rights and Choice As It Relates to the COVID-19 Vaccine.
Brett, this one's yours, too. I'll let you lead off.
Well, you know, there's no secrets to, obviously, what's going on with COVID in our, our country, the world, whatever. And the issue that we're hoping, we, I was hoping to capture more this evening is the ability to choose, a choice. And we're seeing more and more, my God, we came in tonight, and I got picked up my mail out of the council packet and have some newspapers. It says, "States Gear Up For Legal Fight Over Vaccine Mandate." "Colorado School Told To Mask Up Or Shut Down." "Parents Sue To Force Florida Counties To End School Mask Mandates." It's just getting to where, we are getting to a point to where we're, we're seeing people in powerful positions forcing things on us. And the, the, the vax, excuse me, the virus is real. The vaccine can be effective, and if you want to take one, you should. And if you don't want to take one, you shouldn't have to. And so, over the last two weeks, I've worked with Councilmember Bruins in forming a, formulating a resolution that gears things more towards the choice of people and urging employers, companies, government entities, and whatnot to allow for choice. I don't have that resolution in front of me. I don't know if anybody else does and can read it if we need to. But I hope, I think all the other council members have had a chance to see it. And so, it speaks for itself. It does not include the restriction on passports, vaccine passports for businesses. And I want to make sure that our employees understand, while it does not specifically say that the city will, you know, will oppose any mandatory mandate of vaccinations on our employees, if we get to that point, we'll revisit it, I think, and, and see what we want to do about that. But we're letting our employees, I, through this resolution, know that we believe they have a choice, and they should be able to choose what they want to do in regards to getting a vaccination or not.
With the comments?
I think one of us should read the resolution so that people know what we're voting on, up or down. I'll do that if you like.
I don't have it with me, so.
Okay. So, basically, it says, the title of it is, "Resolution Of The City Council Of The City Of Citrus Heights, California Expressing Support For Citizens' Individual Rights And Choice As It Relates To The COVID-19 Vaccine." It says, "Whereas every citizen who wants a vaccine possesses the right to obtain one. People have the right to refuse vaccination based on religious, medical, or personal reasons, and every medical intervention requires informed consent and the right of refusal, including the COVID vaccine. Whereas the city council desires to express its support for the rights of individuals and families living in our community to direct their own health futures. Therefore, be it resolved in order that the city council of the City of Citrus Heights encourages people to make an informed decision, assess risk, and make the best decision for themselves and their families regarding the right to determine if they should receive the COVID-19 vaccine. And two, the city council encourages families to voice their opposition and concerns regarding mandates for students to be vaccinated or wear a mask. Three, the city council supports all employers, including private sector, education, public agencies, and including the City of Citrus Heights, to allow employees the choice as to whether or not to be vaccinated." So, that's the crux of the resolution. And I want to thank Councilmember Daniels for working, allowing me to work with him on this. The things that I objected to have been removed from it. I didn't want to see mandates on businesses for anything, even if I supported perhaps what the mandate would be for. I think we need to, to remain a business-friendly community. And I also didn't see how we could possibly make an imposition on the school districts since they have their own governing board as to what they should do. But we can express, encourage our families to express their opinions. So, and I'm, that's, that's, that's as, and thank you, staff, for taking those thoughts and putting this together. And turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jeanne. And before we continue with our discussion up here, I'd like to make sure that we don't have any speaker cards for this item.
No, I do not have any speaker.
You read one earlier, I think, that was meant for this item?
Correct.
And, okay. No speaker cards. Okay. Tim, you're next.
Yes. I have a couple of comments here. Number one, I'm going to say straight up that, that I vac, I was vaccinated, I received my first shot back on February 27th. Sorry, February 20, yeah, February 27th and March 27th. So, I've been vaccinated for quite a while. I believe in the vaccine. But my personal choice is that, that I also believe in liberty. And if I believe in the vaccine, I believe in the science, then I'm protected. I don't need to, I'm not concerned about being around someone who's unvaccinated or doesn't, doesn't even wear a mask. So, but again, I think this, this really speaks to our own liberty in this country. And when we start issuing mandates that we have to do these sorts of things, I think that really infringes on, on our own right to the pursuit of happiness.
Thanks, Tim. Portia?
I understand the thoughts, and I appreciate the thoughts of my colleagues. This is, however, something that I don't believe that we should be involving ourselves. Any decision you decide to make between, you know, your health and your healthcare provider is your business. And we don't need a mandate or a resolution saying that you can do whatever you want to do. We live in America. You don't want to wear a mask? It's your business. You don't want to take a vaccine? It's your business. But I don't think that it's our role or it's even wholly appropriate for us to be doing something like this.
Well, and my opinion, I have pretty strong opinions. I'm going to apologize in advance. I have some prepared comments, and I'd like to read them, if you don't mind. Usually, I don't write these down, but it's important enough. And about this resolution being about choices, I think Section 1 states that quite well. "We encourage everyone to make an informed decision, assess risk, and make the best decisions for themselves and their families to determine if they should receive the COVID-19 vaccine." I agree with that. I would add that this is an, that this informed decision is between you and your doctor and your personal physicians. And you should consider not only protecting yourself and your family, but everyone you and then they come into contact with. An informed decision does not mean considering and believing misinformation, conspiracy theories, or that the whole thing's a host that is being spread on social media, cable news networks, and the opinions of politicians like me. Everyone and anyone can refuse the vaccine. A mandate does not mean we're going to come to your house and tie you and your children down and inject you with the vaccine against your will. Let me be clear, you do not have to be vaccinated. You get to. That's the amazing part of what's going on, in a record speed. And that brings me to Section 2 of this resolution. "Encouraging Families To Voice Opposition To Mandates For Students To Be Vaccinated And Wear Masks." This language does not sound like a resolution promoting choice. It sounds like the Citrus Heights City Council is, is providing direction to you to oppose measures to keep our children safe. It doesn't sound like a choice to me. It sounds like a direction. And currently, K through 12 students are mandated to be vaccinated with four doses of polio, two doses for, not, two doses of measles, mumps, and rubella, five doses for whooping cough, tetanus, and diphtheria, three doses for hepatitis B, and two doses for chickenpox. Now, one dose of the chickenpox vaccine prevents 95% of moderate infections and 100% of severe infections, very similar to COVID-19's vaccine's efficacy. And my understanding, once approved for children five and over, this vaccine, this COVID-19 vaccine will be added to this list of vaccines I just listed for admittance to school. So, you have the choice to have your children vaccinated or not. And like all the other vaccines, if your kids do not qualify for a valid exemption and you choose not to have them vaccinated, there are consequences to your choices. Vaccine mandates for schools have been ruled in numerous court cases to be constitutional and enforceable. I'm not too sure if I object to the language in, in Section 3. It says employers should give employees a choice to be vaccinated. That's already happening. Why do we need to state that? It should also warn employees about choices coming with some consequences. Citrus Heights does not have a mandate policy. We have no plans for such a policy. A recommendation for a vaccine mandate is not in front of us tonight, and quite frankly, would not be within our purview to create such mandates for schools, other public agencies, private businesses. Instead, I support their choices to keep their students, customers, and employees safe. Typically, our meetings are reserved for conducting the business of Citrus Heights, and this resolution is the exception. Not one physician. It only politicizes this whole COVID discussion. And is, is, in my opinion, a waste of time tonight. And it's a huge disservice to the men and women on the front lines who have carried the world through this pandemic. In a time when I expected our country to come together to keep fellow Americans from dying, it is the ones who continue to politicize and downplay the 700,000-plus deaths. Our country has suffered, suffered through disinformation and conspiracy theories, and this is keeping us from fully opening our businesses, hospitals, schools, travel, entertainment venues, on and on. Your freedom to do as you please stops when my freedom starts. I support your personal choice to vaccinate, wear a mask, or not. 86.7% of the, of the people in the state of California has chosen to get at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccination. I commend them for their courage and all, and encourage all in fear of this vaccine to talk to your doctor before making your choice. We can do better than this. And so, for my choice, I choose not to support this resolution. Thank you for your time. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and move the resolution.
Motion by Daniels.
Well, I'd just like to say, first of all, Steve, I want to thank you for your thoughtful words. And, and I, I agree with much of what you say. I also do believe in the freedom of choice, but I also think that what you said, that Section 1 really says it all.
It does.
Yeah. So, if, I would be inclined to modify the resolution to just confine it to Section 1.
Well, and I, you know, part of that, for me, is adding something about discussing this with your family physician.
Yeah. Yeah. Encourage you to make an informed decision, including a discussion with your family physician or primary care provider, something like that.
Yeah. Is that a substitute motion?
That would be my substitute motion.
Can, can you read number one, please?
So, the substitute motion would be that we, we resolve to encourage people to make an informed decision, including having a serious discussion with their family physician or prime, their family doctor, primary care physician, to assess their risk and make the best decision for themselves and their families, including the right to determine if they should receive the COVID-19 vaccine.
And I guess the only thing I would say to that is that I, I almost don't see the point of the resolution, then. You know, our, this resolution was to encourage people to have choice and to encourage people to, to speak up for their children and, and whatnot. And it seems like we've really diluted it down to just, hey, go talk to your doctor and make it, you know, and that'll be fine.
Well, I think we've, you know, with this discussion, for me, it helps me to see other perspectives as well. I, you know, part of what you said, Steve, sounded like mandates coming from your opinion.
Yeah.
So, I don't agree with that. Why don't we just set this aside and reconsider it?
So, if I could just make a quick comment. When I look at this, the only one that I would say that this is really, "The city council encourages families to voice their opposition and concerns regarding mandates for students to be vaccinated."
That's what probably set me off.
Well, maybe their position. Take the word opposition and concern.
Yeah. I think that is...
You're right.
A little too adversarial for my taste.
Yeah.
You do need to stand up for your children, but I don't think we should dictate an opinion in this res, that's just my...
Can we change the word opposition to position?
Does that work?
"The city council encourages families to voice their position regarding mandates for students to be vaccinated or wear a mask." Just their position. That's pretty neutral.
I could accept that.
I could accept Sections 1 and 2, but...
Would that change?
Yeah. But I am still not 100% comfortable with 3.
So, Brett, I'm aware of your original motion. Are we amending that, or do we want...
However we want to, however we want to word it, I'll amend it, or we'll take that as a substitute, whichever you want to do.
Probably easiest to have Councilmember Daniels offer a new motion, or, I mean, rephrase his original motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
So, I'll move the item as discussed regarding inclusion of Items 1 and 2.
With, with the change of wording in Item 2, to say position.
Yeah, opposition to position.
I second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No. So, it's 4-1?
No, it's 5.
I voted no.
Oh, okay. It's 4-1.
I didn't get to vote no on the garbage thing, so.
All right. Thank you.
So, the motion carries 4-1. Do we have any more business, Amy?
No, not unless there's any other items from the council members.
Other items to add or consider? If not, we are adjourned.